The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, February 6, 2017. It's 7:00 PM. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome our newest councilperson, Mr. Robert Cioto.
Thank you.
This will be your first meeting tonight?
Yes, thank you very much.
Welcome. Good luck.
Can we get the air conditioner out?
Oh, gee. Already. I know. And would you lead us in a pledge, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations tonight, but we do have a public hearing, and I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice for us.
Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, February 6, 2017, in the council chambers of the municipal center, One Central Square, to consider proposed amendment to Section 225-8 of the ordinance entitled Flood Damage Prevention. Copies of the proposed amendment are available at the town clerk's office, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this second day of February.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, before we open up the public hearing, I'm going to ask through our town manager to have our town engineer come to the podium and give us some background information before people, if they wish to speak on it, they'll know a little bit about it. John Bossy?
Good evening. The flood prevention ordinance, the purpose of it is to, as it states, to prevent flooding. One of the, we are required, in order to be a member community of the subsidized flood insurance, we're required to have an actual ordinance that's modeled after FEMA's sample or model ordinance. There are some room to make some changes, but in general, our ordinance follows the model for FEMA. Tonight's amendments are related to adjustments to the firm map, and specifically in the ordinance, what it's doing is changing the revision dates of these particular maps. These maps are generally on the Quinnipiac River, and what they reflect is better survey data. In the past, the aerial, the accuracy of the aerial photographs that they use to develop the maps isn't as good as what they currently use today. So what they did over the last year and a half or so was they revised all the maps that are related to the Quinnipiac River.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is that the property owners that were impacted by the map adjustments that were done by FEMA have been notified. There are some people who now fall within the 100-year flood zone, and there's, I think there's a couple of properties that may have dropped out of that zone. But in order for us to continue to have our citizens participate in the natural flood insurance program, we have to adopt the new revision dates that reflect the updated 100-year flood mapping.
Okay. Thanks very much. With that, I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to the public hearing, you can step to either microphone. Please state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing tonight? Anybody else? Okay, one last time. In that there's no speakers, I will close the public hearing, move on to our next item of business. Our next item is to approve the minutes of previous meetings. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 17, 2017, special meeting, and January 17, 2017, regular meeting, and January 19, 2017, special meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any corrections or additions to the motion, to the minutes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements or reports tonight? Oh, okay. I'll just make a mention that I, along with a number of councilmen, along with the town manager, and several residents, attended the annual food pantry fundraiser at the Aquaterp. This is our food pantry's largest fundraiser of the year. They do have another one, but I think this might be a little bit bigger. In any account, it was very well attended. Everybody appeared to have a good time, and the bottom line is, the food pantry made some money, which they can always use to help our most desperate citizens that live in Plainville. So it was a great time, and I would like to congratulate the organizers of the event and tell them, keep up the good work, and hopefully they'll get more to attend next year. So it was very nice. Okay, we have a number of appointments and resignations that we'll start with.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept the resignation of Rob Cioto Sr. from the Inglewood and Fortlins Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Nicole Palmieri to the Board of Education effective February 6, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint the following individuals to the Betty Bocus Memorial Committee. Sean Cohen, Kevin Tonner, Robert Michalik, Rosemary Miranti, Catherine Picleazy, and Thomas Warnet.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Or, Robert, would you like to embellish a little bit about what this is all about?
Well, with the passing of Representative Bocus after, there was a feeling that there should be some type of consideration given to all of the efforts that she put forth towards the town of Plainville and her many years of serving as a state representative, and even before that as a member of the town council, and all of our service to the community. There were several different areas of the community who were making suggestions as to what might be considered, and having a conversation with some of the town council members, it was felt that putting a committee together to, you know, perhaps, you know, put some thought behind that to come up with an appropriate way to honor her commitment and what she's accomplished in the community would be the best way to proceed and do it in a structured fashion rather than kind of piecemeal it. So that was the reason for the suggestion that this committee be formed, and I think that, you know, it probably won't take a long period of time, but hopefully they would bring back a recommendation to the town council for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
I do know that the Bocus family was notified that this was, this committee was being put together, and I'm sure that part of the discussion will consult with them as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this process? Okay, well, as soon as it's, they're ideas, it'll be coming back to the council. All right, if there is no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to accept with regret the resignation of James Karen from the Senior Citizen Committee.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we send a letter of thanks for his years of service to the committee, please? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? B?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Move to appoint Sonia Sparduti, 7 Higgins Avenue, to the Senior Citizen Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any other appointments or reappointments to any boards or commissions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have one appointment for, like, to reappoint Mark Zerpusco, Zerapusco, Pusco.
That's right.
That's a tough one. To the Downtown Beautification Commission for the term ending 12/31/19.
Second.
There a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any others? No others? Okay. We'll move on. Board of Ed is at our next meeting. Our town attorney, we don't have a report from him. Robert, we're moving on to your report.
I have a couple of items this evening. One is the ESCO update. Back in November, the town council and the town solicited proposals for energy savings performing, performance contracting for town-owned buildings. Johnson Controls of Rocky Hill submitted the only proposal. Their proposal was reviewed by the Capital Projects Building Committee on January 23rd. Johnson Controls proposed to make energy savings improvements to several town and school buildings. The estimated cost of these improvements after rebate is, at this point in time, estimated to be $3.86 million. The town goes forward with the project. The energy savings will be guaranteed by Johnson Controls. The estimated energy savings are in excess of $300,000 per year. The savings would be used to pay for the improvements, and there would be, and there would not be an impact to the current or future operating budgets. The estimated payback for the, from the energy savings to pay back the improvements would be about 10.3 years. The building committee requested that Johnson Controls meet with town facility staff to further refine the scope of the project. No commitments have been made at this time, and no action by the town council is required at this time as well. So just bringing you up to speed on where we stand. Just to give you a feel for what was provided by Johnson Controls, this is the proposal that they put forth.
Wow.
It has a lot of information in it. There's a lot of things that need to be reviewed. There may be some items that the town facility staff would prefer that they consider, and swap some other things out. So we're in a, in a negotiations, you know, or at least a further study stage. The, you know, if Johnson Controls is going to guarantee the savings, they want to make sure that they've done their due diligence, because once, once they've guaranteed it, if we don't achieve those savings, they're going to make up the difference. So, so they want to make sure that everything's lined up, and they don't want to go through that process if, if there's a, you know, if the council isn't, and the Capital Projects Building Committee and the council isn't very much interested in doing it, because even putting this together was a lot of time and effort, and going to the next step is the same, you know, is the same way. So more to follow on that, I'm sure, over the next couple of months. Next item I have is the Wheeler School Project update. The plans for the renovation of Wheeler Elementary School are being finalized. Meetings have been held with the School Facilities Unit of the Department of Administrative Services to discuss grant reimbursement for the project. DAS has indicated that if approved at referendum before June 30th of this year, the project would be eligible under the current authorized grant reimbursement rate of 65.36 percent. A tentative referendum date of June 6th is being considered at this time. It is anticipated that the school reimbursement, project reimbursement rates could dramatically decrease with the new fiscal '18 state budget. However, again, if it's approved before June 30th, it would be under the existing reimbursement rates. A special meeting of the Capital Projects Building Committee is being scheduled for Thursday, February 23rd, to hear a presentation from ONG and KBA regarding the proposed project. Town council and Board of Education members will be invited to attend this meeting. At this meeting, the proposed design and estimated cost of the project will be presented. The location of the meeting is yet to be determined. Members of the public are welcome to attend this meeting as well. It will be posted, and it will be posted online where the location of the meeting will be held. It'll most likely be held in this, in this meeting, in this room here, but there is some other conflicts that are going on, that we're going to have to move some things around, but we'll finalize that within the next day or so.
Okay.
Again, you know, if the project's going to move forward, they have to, you know, finalize the proposal, finalize the cost, and they'll be presenting that to the Capital Projects Building Committee on that evening, and we'd like to at least, at the same time, have the town council and the Board of Education there to hear the information as well. No decisions will be made that evening. It'll be initial hearing, but there are steps that need to be taken after that, and if, you know, if the, if the three groups aren't, you know, if they feel that they're close enough to move forward, then, you know, at least we'll, at least go forward to the next steps, which will include presentations, public hearings, and motions at future meeting dates.
Okay.
All right?
Thanks.
We have an update on railroad crossings. Town staff met with Pan Am and state officials to review the seven rail crossings in Plainville. Those attending the meeting included two representatives from Pan Am, six from the State Department of Transportation. It also included Representative Bill Pettit and State Senator Henry Martin, Police Chief Matt Catania, Town Engineer John Bossy, and several other town staff, including myself. DOT staff indicated that funds are currently available to make some improvements to the warning devices at several of the crossings. Critical crossings identified during the meeting included Broad Street, Town Line Road, and West Main Street. As a result of the meeting, DOT will begin a detailed analysis of all the rail crossings in town to determine the improvements that need to be made to comply with the Federal Railroad Administration requirements. Some of the improvements could be made perhaps this summer, while others, such as West Main Street, will require significantly more study time. As it stands right now, no local funds would be required for any of the proposed improvements that would be recommended. Updates on possible rail crossing improvements will be reported as they develop. It was a very productive meeting. Upcoming meeting schedule update. Due to several factors, the next town council meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 22nd. Additionally, the town manager's proposed budget for fiscal year '18 will be presented to the town council on Thursday, March 2nd, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. The March 6 regular meeting of the town council will be moved to Thursday, March 9th, and combined with the public hearing on the town manager's proposed fiscal year '18 budget. Budget work sessions of the town council will begin on Monday, March 13th. All of these dates and times have been posted on the town website calendar, so if you didn't write them down, went to them too quickly, you can go to the town website calendar and pick them up there as well. With regards to happenings, Scott Colby is not in shape to give the, to speak to the happening, so I'm going to take over his duties this evening. He's a little bit under the weather with regards to his voice. So with that in mind, it's relatively short report. Most, all of the happenings came from the Plainville Senior Center, and it's about a couple of events that are happening over the next month, and I'd like to go over them. I think that hopefully people are interested regarding them. There's going to be a Veterans Coffee on Tuesday, February 7th, at 10:30 AM. Informational and support. Its meeting will be conducted by Wayne Ryu, Veterans Liaison for Hartford Healthcare at Home. Wayne can provide assistance with questions regarding veterans' benefits, entitlements, services, aid and attendance, service-connected disabilities, and means testing, presumptive diseases, military burial, military honors, and other services or issues. Anybody who's interested should call the Senior Center at 747-5728 so that they can plan refreshments for that event. So a lot of good information about veterans' benefits can be had if, if attends to that meeting on February 7th at 10:30 AM at the Senior Center. And it's for all veterans over 60 and their spouses. They have a grand, there's also planned for grandparents, relatives raising grandchildren for Tuesday, February 14th, at 10:30 AM. And if you are a grandparent or a relative who is raising a grandchild, niece, or nephew, you are not alone. Millions of children are living in grandparent-headed households where the grandparents and relatives are responsible for the needs of children. At this meeting, you can share resources, ideas, struggles, joys, and more with others who are raising their grandchildren. Funding for this program is made possible in part by the Older Americans Act through the North Central Area Agency on Aging. Please call the Senior Center again at 747-5728 to register. Also, on Tuesday, February 28th, there'll be a mobile mammography at the Senior Center parking lot. It's from 9:00 AM to 1:45. Insurance is accepted, free for women with no insurance, and they made a point of saying that no one will be turned away for inability to pay. Open to women of any age. There are eligibility requirements for the screening. Please inquire at the Senior Center. And again, they are recommending that you call the Senior Center to register. And finally, there's energy assistance. The State of Connecticut Energy Assistance Program is available to income-eligible residents. Information on income guidelines and more is explained in the Senior Center December newsletter, or call the Human Services Agency, formerly Bristol Community Organization, at 860-582-7490. That's all we have for happenings this evening.
Okay.
And if you have any questions or comments for, well, probably me, we'll try to answer them for you.
Does anybody have any questions for the town manager on his report or the happenings? Just a comment, I think it's beneficial that you're able to meet with the folks from the railroad. I know that people have been concerned about scheduling and different types of activities that are going on that are somewhat new to certain areas of town, but it's encouraging that they'll be able to do some work on some of those crossings, because some of them do need a little bit of help, and the fact that they are, they're going to target our town, our small town, with all those different places, I think that's, that says a lot. So it is a good thing that they were willing to meet and look at the whole, the whole town where those crossings go through.
Yep.
Okay? Anybody else? Thank you. We'll move on to your public comments section. During this section of our meeting, we welcome the public to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. You will be given three minutes to speak to the council. I have a list that's been started, so we'll go through those folks first, and then if anybody else wishes to speak, I would welcome them to do so. First person is Candace Hall.
I'm Candace Hall, and I live at 113 Shuttle Meadow Road. That's at the intersection of Shuttle Meadow and River Street, where there's a stop sign that appears to be selectively invisible to drivers. I haven't made a point of spending time and counting the number of people who either hardly slow down or don't slow down at all to go through the stop sign, and I am just waiting for someone to be seriously hurt or killed, for something to be done about that. Hopefully, by that time, someone will have had the insanity to decide to purchase my house, and that person who is hurt or killed will not be me, anyway. I want to talk about, oh, and I also think that the water in Plainville is absolutely awful. It tastes terrible. It corroded my hot water tank. People have known for years that the taste is bad. I can't understand why, all of a sudden, I got something from the valley water saying that they had no idea that there was a problem. Okay, but anyway, what I do want to talk about is incidents of violence against law enforcement officers have increased in locations in Connecticut, throughout the United States and abroad. Members of police forces have been seriously injured or killed while on duty, just doing their job. Many times, people in these communities have responded by showing their support through leaving flowers, candles, and other items, either at the scene of the crime incidents or at the police station. It need not take an act of violence for local citizens to be motivated to show their support of and appreciation for the police serving their communities. Mindful that unfortunately, a tragedy could happen at any time, I personally did not want to wait to show my support. What I decided to do was very simple and could be replicated by anyone in town wishing to do so. On separate occasions, I shopped at local bakeries, because I don't like to cook, and I brought coffee cakes and cookies to the police station. It was no big deal, but I felt that providing snacks for on-duty personnel was a tangible and delicious way to express my appreciation for the important work done to protect all of us. I do not want memorial flowers placed in response to a tragedy to be my only indication of support. I feel that is too little, too late, and I encourage others in the community to consider outwardly showing their support of our police department in their own way. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very nice of you to do that and recognize our police department. They certainly do work hard for every citizen in Plainville, and too often we forget that. So many thanks for your kindness. Next on the list is John Kislik. John?
Good evening, Town Council.
Thank you.
John Kislik, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. At the end of last meeting, you said I was going to talk about Wheeler Clinic. I think I was a little shaken up by the tone of the last meeting, and it could be, I'm a year older since last meeting too, so maybe that's part of my problem. I want to talk about Wheeler School and the project. A few years back, 2016, September, Castle Booze handed out these things for their estimated cost. You have architecture site estimate. It includes everything. Hazmat, ADA upgrades, roofing for the section that has to be done, then mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection. Their price came to four and a half million, a little more. Just recently, I guess, building committees, they came out with a new one, up to date October 12th. And I know these are estimates, they're still working on them. But what they have with Wheeler School alterations, they didn't break it down, but they're up to 8.2 million. And then when you do the estimated reimbursements, they're at six and a half million, and then with the roof, it's another half a million. So, so their breakdown comes to just about seven million, where we were at four and a half. So I can see, maybe they changed a few more things, you know, there's a boiler, changed the boilers out from steam to hot water, and something's could have gone more. But my problem with this is, and first I want to say, I'm not against the renovation of that school. I believe it should. But my problem is to renovate as new, because if you go with that $7 million figure that the town is going to have to pay if we just do the alterations, and you go to renovate as new, we are now up to 12, 12.3 million. That's an increase of just fixing what needs to be fixed, everything on this list, which is everything from carpeting to lighting, you name it. We go up 5.4 million because they're going to go with renovate as new. What is renovate as new going to do? Gold-plated fixtures or something? This is my problem that I've been after. I think renovate as new, we don't need. The town wants to keep down their cost. You'll pay seven million, whereas you're going to pay 12.3 for our share. This is what I'm asking the town council. You know, we went through this before with Tofflon School, and I thought the Board of Ed learned a lesson. Ed learned a lesson with that one. And I'm hoping that the people see this, just to go to renovate as new on top of fixing everything that they need that should be done to bring this right up to codes and everything, why go with an extra 5.4 million? And I hope this council thinks about that. You know, you can't keep giving this Board of Ed everything they want. And I was on the building committees, and I know they get, they get pressure, and they end up giving in and caving in. And I hope this council will look at this stuff and think of the town more. If we can do it all for seven million, why should we pay 12? Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the folks that have signed up. I'll open it up to anybody who did not sign the list. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. The first comment is, this is just an observation, and I believe this was brought up at prior meetings, a prior meeting. I was driving to the credit union, Woodruff Avenue, and I went by Linden Street School. And maybe it was the time I caught it, but there, cars were lined up on the street, and yet the, what really caught my eye was, the parking lot is empty. And I thought the exercise of taking down the old school and doing what we're going to do is, so we'd have parking available. And just to, again, it's an observation. I'm just curious to, why it's not being utilized? Or are those people visiting people?
Well, I don't know if there are folks that are visiting the school, or if there are folks that are visiting the neighborhood. That would be difficult to determine.
Or would it be better if I brought this up at the BOE meeting?
Yeah. That's, it's certainly, you know, something, some people get into habits of doing certain things certain ways, and it's very difficult to break those habits. Again, I couldn't, I've also been by there during the day, and there's, there's cars parked on the street in front of the school parking lot, and I don't know if that's somebody in the neighborhood parking there, or if it's school-related traffic.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying this so that you start handing out tickets or anything along that line. It's just, something was built for something, and it's not being utilized. That's all I'm trying to bring to bear. The other thing is, talking about the Wheeler School, and this is just literally shooting from the hip, there was something about meetings, and one of the meetings Mr. Lee mentioned was there's going to be a presentation for the Town Council and the BOE.
Yes.
Will the public, the date hasn't been established, I'm assuming?
It's been established.
All right. But people, residents will be allowed to attend the meeting also?
Oh, yeah. They said that as well during the meeting.
I'm sure.
Discussion, I didn't mention.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Joanne?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I know it doesn't make any difference when I say the prayer, because there's no respect for it to come at the beginning, so everybody else went before me tonight, just to make a point. So here we go. And I think it's so important to have respect for the Lord in these times. O dear God, our heavenly Father, please grant our Town Council the wisdom, knowledge, strength, and courage to perform their elected duties and responsibilities to the citizen and charter of Plainville. Now, as far as the Old Linden Street School site is concerned, in my opinion, what you've done there is just create a wasteland. It's about the stupidest thing I've ever seen. And it's, it's, it was from the beginning, a conspiracy to get, for the Board of Ed and the school system to get what they wanted. And it was a building that was taken away from the people that belonged to the people. And because the school gave it back to the people. And now, I think it's funny that the people, the parents, the teachers, are parking back on the street, probably in that no-parking side, that apparently nobody's watching. So be my guest. It's, it's, it's just, as far as the whole thing is concerned, it's a waste of money. A wasteland looks awful, and we could have had a great building that could have been used for several different things. Made a bad decision. I hope that the budget coming up is going to be finalized with good decisions, because you've made a lot of bad decisions. You made a bad decision as far as the turf, artificial turf over at school, the resultant problem with the track, the bubbling track. The, the Old Linden Street School was a very bad decision. And I don't know, there's a couple of others, but I don't want to run over my three minutes. My goodness, there was such a stir and a fuss last time, calling a recess. Oh, my goodness. The taxpayer really kind of gets it, doesn't he? Or he and she.
Your time has expired, Joanne.
Oh, yes, okay. Yes, ma'am. Holy smokes.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that hasn't spoken yet? Nicole?
My name's Nicole Palmieri. I live at 20 Julie Road. I apologize for the way I sound. I just wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to be on the Board of Ed. I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to learning as much as I can and giving my input and hopefully helping to better Plainville schools. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not? Anybody else? Gail? Are you coming up? Okay. Neither one. They both worked. Just make sure you pull the mic down so we can hear you.
Okay, Gail Black, 4 C N C. Because of the water issue, I thought I would bring a sample. This is my coffee filter, and I'm going to give it to Mr. Lee to see, I wash, I use it as gross, isn't it? It's pretty gross. Guys can keep it. I bought a new one yesterday after I picked it up. It was just overnight. I washed it. I use bottled water for my coffee, but then I wash it in the faucet water. And, you know, it comes out, you can pass it on, or, but it's just a sample, it's pretty gross. I tried to get off some of the scuff, but that's all I have, you know, that's just, I thought it might help. You know, no, it is plastic, I understand that, so I actually bought a new one. But, you know, hopefully I'll buy another one that's not as bad, but at any rate. I do have a question about the, what do you call it? The railroad tracks. They've been good too, they haven't been doing the middle of the night, which is really good. Where do the tracks go? We were trying to figure that out.
The cracks on the track?
There's like two, there's two tracks. One comes behind here.
Railroad, railroad track.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said, I was thinking of the high school track. My apologies.
No, no, the railroad tracks. I'm sorry, I might, I might be off tonight.
No, it's my fault.
The railroad tracks. Like, we're trying to figure out where they go. One goes behind here, doesn't it?
Right.
But that's not the one that goes to...
Town Line Road?
Well, that comes from Thailand, Town Line Road, but I think. But there's one that goes down near Lowe's.
Robert, can you give us an update on the track?
The east, the east-west, the east-west line goes from Berlin to Waterbury. So the one that goes past Lowe's or goes, you know, into Bristol, goes from Waterbury to Berlin. The north-south line goes from the rail yard just north of the municipal center down to Town Line Road. So north-south is the spur that services three businesses. The east-west line, again, goes from Waterbury to Berlin.
Okay. I was wondering, now, nobody's complaining when I make this statement, but I got into a conversation with my friend who, she lives around Highland Market, and I started talking about the train, and she says, "Oh, I hear it." So they, you know, I guess if it's late at night and nothing's happening, you could hear it. But she likes trains. She likes trains a lot, so she was happy. But I just, I didn't realize how far the sound went, you know, that's all. But, so we were trying to figure out where the tracks were, because I know I can hear it because I'm near Town Line Road, so, and she was trying to figure it out for her end. So that's, we were just curious, that's all. All right. Well, hopefully that thing will help with your water. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not had a turn? Anybody else? Thanks for your input. Move on to the next item. I have no old business, and we have some new business to take care of. So...
Madam Chair. Motion to adopt the amendment to the ordinance entitled Flood Damage Prevention.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to establish the public hearing on Thursday, March 2nd, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal center to hear public comment on the Town Manager proposed fiscal year 2018 budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion to establish the following special meetings of the Town Council for the purpose of considering and acting upon the fiscal year 2018 budget. March 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 2017, in the municipal center, council chambers at 6:30 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Everybody's good with those dates so far? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Revised.
Revised. Revised. Revised, yeah.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do we have any items, other discussion items for interest, Mr. Lee?
Just some clarification with regards to Linden Street School. The, the parking lot that was created where Old Linden used to be is intended to be for temporary parking, not for all-day parking. So for people who are dropping their children off and picking them up. As far as we know, anybody who's parking on, on East Maple Street is parking, is not parking illegally. So people are allowed to park there, and they're not parking illegally. One of the major issues with, with the previous setup was the, was the pickup time and the fact that, you know, people were parking and people were running across the street in all directions. And, and I believe that, that there's more use of the, of the parent drop-off area, which has alleviated that to a great degree. I'm not sure who was parking in that area. I would suggest anybody who, who is concerned about that, they should contact the superintendent's office or contact the principal directly. There certainly is parking in other areas, you know, the other parking lots that are along Linden Street, there's, there's spots in that during the day as well. Certainly, that's further away from the entrance way and the exit ways, but, but nobody's parking illegally as far as we can tell, and that, you know, it's the parent drop-off and pickup that was really the, you know, the big issues that I believe have been alleviate, alleviated to a cer, to a, to a certain degree. I think the installation of the fence in the springtime will also help to curb, curb whatever's being done as well, but just wanted to at least bring that up.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We do not have an executive session, so I'll want to make a motion to adjourn. Madam Chair? Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.